It could have been that night of champions, too. We had that night of champions.
That was a big night.
That's huge.
That was huge.
Now, this'll be a, what, a four-camera shoot?
Yeah.
Uh, three.
I'm only kidding.
Yeah, yeah. It will be put on YouTube, so you can share it out.
Okay.
Well, that's what you, that's where I saw the, uh, that was a big night. The Hall of Fame thing. I just punched it in YouTube.
I might have you to move over just a little bit that way. It will be put on YouTube, so you can share it out.
See, Ron Bevers is the one that got me.
Well, that's what, that's where I saw the, uh,
he goes, you know, this is what they're wanting to do. Do you think you can do like little features or highlights or something?
Just a little bit that way.
And I said, well, yeah, sure. Let our students work on it. Problem is, students don't take the care or the attention.
See, Ron Bevers is the one that got me.
New students.
It's hard, too. I have students that'll come to a soccer game and they've never seen a soccer game. So they don't know the game.
Yeah.
Working a camera, they don't know.
I would not, yeah. I don't know the soccer game either.
Jeremy's had to learn.
No, do not. They knew quite a few of them.
I love all of them. I've never played golf, but I love covering golf.
Now, do you do a lot of interviews on highlight?
I mean, I do a lot of. Highlight.
I gotta quit that. I'm sorry.
A lot of people don't know what highlight is, so.
Bo Davenport called it jolly eye.
Jolly eye.
Now, do you do a lot of interviews on highlight?
This is, I've been telling this, I do a lot of it. It's my 40th year doing video with kids.
I gotta quit that. You know what you're doing.
Started at 85.
A lot of people don't know what highlight is, so.
Bo Davenport called it jolly eye.
This is, and then they brought in.
My God, you've gone through the history of.
Crainer Sloan.
Crainer Sloan.
Yeah.
You know where Crainer Sloan's from?
Isn't it like Trigg County or?
I thought Crainer Sloan.
It's a small.
I thought, I thought from Eastern Kentucky.
He could be. I just know he won, he won the state tournament with a really small school.
Now, that was Bo Davenport.
No.
From Edmondson County in Crainer Sloan.
Yeah, that's Edmondson, but when they won, like in 65 or 66, but Crainer.
I thought Crainer Sloan.
It was a small school.
Crainer Sloan, I know that name. I, yeah.
He was, he was, I want to say, I'm not sure where he went to college.
That was Bo Davenport.
But.
From Edmondson County.
He came and coached Fort Knox High School. Lee Bishop was his assistant. And that year was the last year that Fort Knox ever went to district.
Crainer Sloan, I know that name.
Because that's before the 194th had to be moved out and all the different things moved out.
Now, where'd you grow up?
Oh, I'm from Rainyville, just over near.
When did you graduate from nowhere?
1980. So we had, like I said, that was Ron's, well, of course, he started in 75, I think, as an assistant. But he became the head coach. Well, he started around 72 and then became the head coach in 74, 75.
Have you ever interviewed Martha Lloyd?
1980. Yeah.
Have you?
Martha.
Up at North Harden, she has a Western collection. That's on the Western room.
Martha was, I'm on the North Harden.
Martha Lloyd was a super fan, wasn't she?
Oh, gosh, yes.
She's a super fan.
Well, and see.
A Western room in the North Harden. She loved Ron Bevers. Just loved Ron Bevers.
And then you had Barbara Prophet, and Barbara still does stuff with the team.
She has a Western.
Finally. Oh, yeah, she just had a birthday here in the last month.
Wow. She come, come to Western for every game.
Oh, yeah.
During the week.
Well, she graduated from Limbel.
Love her.
High school.
I didn't know where she went.
Yeah.
Barbara did.
Yeah. And I think her last name was Henderson.
Wow.
I can't remember what her maiden name was. But Ronnie, her husband, died about.
Oh, yeah.
Probably 10 years ago. Now, she, well, she graduated from Limbel. Anyway, with Martha, um, yeah, she's a huge.
Barbara Prophet did.
I'm on.
Western.
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 Yeah, she's on the.
I've seen her room. I mean, it's everything in there.
North, uh, North Harden's Hall of Fame, Athletic Hall of Fame. We're all on that together. She's retired, and so has Judy Bishop. Judy Bishop is the other person that's nuts about, but she's nuts about UK, too. She's crazy about North Harden. She was a business teacher there. Yeah, she's on the.
I've seen her room. I mean, it's everything in there.
Of course, Martha's always elementary teacher.
Didn't know what she taught. I knew she was a teacher. Loved Ron Bevers.
I think she had some help. She's had some recent health. But she's nuts about UK.
Who hadn't?
That is true. Are we ready? Ready in there? I'm gonna treat this as a special issues and insights.
Didn't know what she taught.
Okay?
Did we look at you?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I think she had some help. She's had some recent health. I'll get this camera for my cue. That is true, yeah. Are we ready? Ready in there? I'm gonna treat this as a special issues and insights. Okay. Okay. Yeah, so the first year, they went to state in, um, 81. And that team had James Jeter, in addition to Robbie Valentine and Brett Burrow. And then, uh, James graduated. He went to U of L. And he still helped. He held the record for the mile.
Oh, I, I know.
He's amazing.
Well, Robbie and Darrell Griffin, I think, are going to be there.
That team. Oh, good.
Josh Hawkins is, I talked to Josh, and he said he'd bring, they, they do a lot of stuff together, and they're all worked together.
I'm hoping Robbie goes in, you know, we need to.
Oh, well, his high school record would, was certainly.
Yeah, he didn't do much if he was having gutts or.
But he never did recover from the surgery, you know.
Right.
But Ron always said Jeter was the best player.
He's just the best athlete.
Best athlete, best everything, yeah.
Okay, we good?
Oh, well.
We can start?
His high school record would.
Hello, welcome to the special edition of Issues and Insights. Today, I am joined by basketball aficionados of the state of Kentucky and also the area. Uh, Gary West is joining us, and Gary, you've been chronicling basketball probably all your life. Okay, we good?
Well, I have. I've been a fan from the time I was a little boy and would read Sport Magazine. That was before Sports Illustrated. And I collected the baseball cards and anything I collected related to sports. I was all in.
And then Charlie Thurman, and Charlie, you were, uh, you've done a lot of legends interviews and things, so how did you get started with all that?
Well, uh, I read Gary's book on Kelly Coleman, and I picked it up one day at the Barnes and Noble, came home and read it in 2007. I immediately put it down after I read it and called him because I wanted to meet him and tell him how much I loved the book. And it took me forever to get him, but I finally did. And when he came to my house, we just immediately hit it off. And I just told him, I said, I want to meet Kelly Coleman. He said, well, that's not easy. You know, so, and, and I, we were, I said, well, what, I said, I want to meet him. He, I'm kind of a bulldog about that. When I want something, I, I want it. Give me a good reason I can't. He said, well, they're buying their school and they're gonna turn it into a museum. He said, uh, would you do a fundraiser? And I said, be happy to. So, so we had the first fundraiser for Mountain Sports Hall of Fame in 2007, 18 years ago. And raised a pretty good sum. But he's the fault that I'm in all the legend stuff. We've, we've done a bunch, and we've loved every one of them. We brought a lot of pleasure to the older guys and recognition back. They have, they love coming to the meets because it's just fun. They get to talk. We serve a Cajun shrimp bowl, which is great. And it's, but it's just, I don't know who gets the most fun, the legends or me and Gary for being able to put it together. It just, it's, it's been a great run for us, and we've had fun. And it's been a while since we've done one, and so Gary has updated his book, and this was a great reason to get together and bring some legends in and have a fun event.
Hey, yeah, Gary, you're from Elizabeth Town. You graduated from Elizabeth Town High School? 1961.
1961, yes.
Um, so at an early age, um, when did you start thinking about writing books?
Well, I was a journalism major.
Right.
And I started out my education at Western and transferred to the University of Kentucky to get my journalism degree. At the time, Western did not offer that.
In the early 60s.
In the early 60s, they did not, now Western's got a top-flight journalism school.
Exactly.
But anyway, and up at, at UK, I got to know the Ruphrons, a couple of them were my fraternity brothers in, in college. And one thing led to another, and then I moved to Bowling Green, and I'm in Bowling Green, and I think, this guy Kelly Coleman. I didn't know if he was alive or not. So one day, I was on my way to Prestonsburg and passed by the road sign there that said Wayland with an arrow pointing to it, and I took that arrow. Drove down there, and I walked in. I said, is Kelly Coleman still alive? I was at the filling station. And they said, well, yes, if you wait around, he'll be here in about 10 minutes. I thought, you have got to be kidding me.
Kelly Coleman.
And Kelly Coleman, said he stops in here. He stops in here every morning for coffee after he goes to the post office. By the way, there's some pictures by the coffee machine of Kelly, and just make yourself at home till he gets, well, he never showed. Never came by, so I had another meeting that day in Somerset, heading from Prestonsburg. I left my card thinking that was the end. Kelly Coleman, said he stops in here. Stops in here every morning for coffee. Somebody he didn't know from a can of corn. So I left my card, and about two weeks later, I get an email that says, Gary, I understand you're trying to reach me. Here's my phone number. Signed, Kelly. He didn't even have to put his last name.
Exactly.
I knew who it was. And so we hooked up, and I drove down to Cookeville, Tennessee, where he was living at the time, and met with him, thinking I'd have a nice magazine story. And I rode back, and Gina, I don't even remember the ride back, or thinking, oh, my gosh, because we met. Thinking it was gonna be about an hour. We met for three and a half hours in his house.
I've been on those.
Yeah, and it just one thing led to another. I said, I've got a book here. So I came back and I started the process.
Kelly Coleman, King Kelly Coleman is probably what Magic Johnson was to the NBA. Or, or the state of Kentucky is Michael Jordan.
He, he is to high school basketball. There's no question. There's nobody that comes close to King Kelly Coleman as a legend.
Why is that?
Well, his record, for one thing, he averaged close to 50 points in a game. He had 68 points in the state tournament, the consolation game against Bell County. He had 75 points and 41 rebounds in one game against Maytown, and all of a sudden, the entire state of Kentucky's starting to read about him from the likes of Earl Ruby and Bob White and Earl Cox and some of them. And he became, some people didn't even think he was real. I mean, he was just a legend.
Now, they didn't have the three-point shot at that time either.
Didn't have the shot.
So all of his points were singles or doubles.
Two points, and he had an act for rebounding, and he missed shots. He just knew where the ball was going. And he was, uh, he was out there, and everybody had heard about him. But they didn't know what happened to the guy. Like I said, I didn't even know if he was still alive. And found out he was very much alive. And, you know, I wrote the first book, and that's how Charlie and I became friends, uh, over the first book. And then I wrote the second one. And I said, well, you've already written one. And I said, two books? I said, well, let me ask you this. How many books has Abraham Lincoln had written about him? Maybe a thousand?
At least.
So, so anyway, Kelly's got two.
I remember there's footage of him, and they're carrying him off the course or on the course with the crown on his head. So the idea of having that, that royalty attached to him, he wore it well.
And I think that probably that crown was maybe photoshopped.
Oh, gotcha.
The crown was probably, uh, it, I, it wouldn't have been like Kelly. With Charlie doesn't have to let him put a crown on him in the car. No, he, he wasn't. Now, he was proud of his record and proud of his shot and what he accomplished. Uh, and by the way, Kelly turned out to be a pretty shrewd businessman, too. And a lot of people said, well, what did he do? Make a living or did something? Lived in Michigan, uh, lived in Ohio, and, uh, came back to Wayland, and he always gravitated back to Wayland.
It's such a small, rural town.
And he, uh, he just came back there, didn't he, Charlie?
Yes.
He knew where he was from. He always paid homage to that.
Yes, he did.
Now, in terms of his college ball, he was recruited and.
Gina, he was recruited, recruited by everybody in the, in the country.
Right.
He was a first-team high school All-American. It was Kelly and Oscar Robertson, Jerry West, Corky Withrow, and Jackie Moran were the top five players back in the day. And he could have gone anywhere. Uh, he got upset with the way UK recruited him. West Virginia tried to hide him out in a military school for a while, and he didn't like the life of being a cadet.
Right.
Pretty quickly came back to Wayland. But he went to Kentucky Wesleyan, and his records are still there at Kentucky Wesleyan. He was incredible.
Had he thought about going to the NBA?
Oh, yes, and he did go to the NBA. He did play for the New York Knicks and stuff, and then he played on a, I, maybe it was the Washington Generals that used to play against the Globetrotters a little bit. But he was in, and he was in another ABL, American Basketball League, uh, so he was in several things.
Had he thought about going to the NBA?
It was one of these guys that Kelly told me when I was interviewing Gary, I made some terrible decisions in my life. He said, when I would come to the fork in the road, when I should have gone left, I went right. And he said, one of the things that stayed with me, he said, I did a terrible job growing up, but I've done a good job of growing old. I thought that's pretty prophetic.
Yes, it is. What was it like? Well, you didn't even get to see him play. I mean, I've only seen him on footage.
I heard him on radio. I listened to games when I was a kid of Kelly Coleman.
So the Mountain Sports Radio Show was broadcasting the games at that time?
No, there was every, back in the day, in the state tournament, every town had somebody there at Memorial Coliseum or wherever it was, didn't they, Charlie?
Didn't have rights. One, one station didn't have the rights to it.
Wide open.
Wide open.
At Memorial, which had to be awesome because of such a great team to watch basketball in.
Yes, yes.
Now, as a teenager, did either of you ever go to the state tournament in Kentucky?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was a big deal.
I know.
I remember. I'm sort of thinking school would be canceled maybe Friday.
Well, they didn't count your absence if you, and all the ballplayers went for sure.
Exactly. Cheerleaders and some of the.
And principals, hey, you know, when we were growing up in the 50s and 60s, the state tournament was a big deal. You went.
I know. Do you remember any of the games that you got to see?
Oh, my. I, I followed E-Town Catholic up in 61, Hardman Blaine's team. And knew all the guys, a couple of the players were my two best friends growing up, even though I went to E-Town. They went to E-Town Catholic, and we just lived, you know, around the corner from each other. We were close friends and followed them, of course. Yes, and, and it just seemed like that when you got to the state tournament, everybody rooted against the Loyds. And rooted for the Mountain Schools big time, regardless of who it was. If it was Car Creek, it didn't matter who it was.
So the Males and the Manials and the Thouards at that time, they can get as much credit as the Mountain Schools.
They didn't. And then next, they rooted kind of against the Lexington Schools, the Bryan Stations and the Tate's Creeks and some of them. But the Mountain Schools, the way I remember it, Charlie, were the ones that really pulled for it.
And you had the Mountains on the east and the west. You had Car Creek as much over in the western side at that time.
No, Car Creek's the Mountains. Car Creek was only a few miles from Wayland.
Oh, that's right.
They played each other a couple of times during the season. Then they might play in the district tournament and the region tournament. So they could play four times during the season.
And you had the Mountains on the east and the west.
And did.
Uh, Charlie, you've got an upcoming fundraiser, and Gary, your books, you're gonna have signed books there and everything. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to see you and, and everybody that's coming in. Tell me a little bit about the event, the fundraiser.
But it'll be at our event bar at Thurman Landing.
That's in Sonora.
In Sonora. We are, we're expecting about 150 people. It's gonna, it's an afternoon event. It'll go from 1:00 to 6:00. We're, we've invited about 25 legends from the 50s up to the current ones. And it's old Jack Givens, Richie Farmer, guys like that, some of the younger, not, not, not as old as the 50. We're losing a lot of the 50 guys, and so what we're gonna have, Corky Withrow will be there. We've talked to Darrell Carrier. We're hoping he's gonna be able to get up for a while, and hoping Clem Haskins comes in for a visit. They can't stay long. They can't stay all afternoon, but if they can just come in for a visit, it'll be great. And it's just, it's a meet and greet. Have some fun. Mid-afternoon, about 3:00, we'll do a big shrimp bowl for everybody. And the other most important thing is, we're gonna try to raise money. We're raising money. All the money goes to Coach Ron Bevers' foundation and the Mountain Sports Hall of Fame. Uh, Susan Bevers will be there. Jerry Foltz will be there from Wayland, and he runs that, and two people who, and, and as Gary and I both know, these two guys did as much for history and people as anybody in the country has. They're just two great foundations, done a lot for everybody. And so just being a part to help them, make some money for them is, is gonna be fun for us.
I, I just know that, Gary, you've got so many stories compiling all your, your knowledge with, with King Kelly and, and the other things that you've been involved with. Why do you think basketball is so key to this state?
Well, one of the reasons, I think, high school basketball and college basketball, too, is there's no professional teams in Kentucky. And you direct your attention to it, and the only thing, at one time, I'm trying to think, Charlie may know the answer, how many high schools there were when Kelly was playing. There might have been 350. Now, there might be 200, maybe not that many.
Been a lot of consolidation.
And the small towns, and you know from where you grew up how important your school was. I'm gonna say Rainyville. Had some good teams, by the way.
They did.
Went to the state tournament several times.
Now, that was before me being a student there.
Yeah, but they had a history.
They did.
And they, and it's that same way around here.
I mean, Coach Perkins?
Yes, Coach Perkins.
They play against the Vine Grove, uh, Blue Devils.
Blue Devils.
And the Rainyville Red Devils.
Red Devils and Blue Devils.
You had Chet Redman at Vine Grove, who was one fine coach. I got to know him. In fact, it's kind of funny. He lived in Bowling, and he worked, moved down there and worked for Western. And he called me one day and said, Gary, you may not know me. This is Chet Redman. And I, I thought, oh, my gosh. I mean, I said, Coach, I called him. I said, I know you, you were one fine coach. He said, well, I understand you wrote a book on King Kelly Coleman, and I saw him play, and I would love to get that book. I took it over to Coach Redman's house, sat down at his kitchen table with him, and he started telling me little stories and stuff. And after, here's the thing about, after you write a book about an individual, especially someone as iconic as King Kelly Coleman, people come up and say, well, you should have put that in there. Or here's a story here. Or you should have done that. Or I've got these pictures and everything. And all of a sudden, I had another book with the stories and stuff. Now, you can't change history, so you do repeat history and Kelly's record and stuff, but I've got a lot of things in the new book, and I've had some people to kind of preview it for me. They were friends, and they said, Gary, this may be the best book you've done. And if any of your viewers or listeners have never been to Charlie's place at Thurman's Landing in Sonora, it is a wonderful place for any kind of event. There's space, there's parking and everything else. But what, what Charlie's done is just absolutely phenomenal, this place. So you have a chance, if you've never been there, to come down for several reasons.
I was gonna say, I have been to his shrimp bowl, and it is amazing. He does it one, uh, your staff, they do a great job. Your lovely wife, uh, before she, she left us, but it's always a fun time. And with all of those individuals being there on that day, it's gonna be a little bit like everyone trying to get there. Hear this story and hear that story, you know, pick, I'll stand over at this group for a little bit and then move over to this group, just one after another. I can't wait, really.
But that's why we don't do it for hours, so it's all afternoon. And as the older group, they want to get home before dark, so they can come and stay two or three hours and visit and then head home. It'll be a fun day. It'll just be a great fun day.
Beautiful book here. Uh, how long did it take you to add that?
Well, I spent close to a year and had some really good interjection of things from J.R. Van Hoos, great player. Urban, urban step.
Beautiful book here. Uh, how long did it take you to add that?
Part of the eulogy at Kelly's funeral. And that position, people would come up and tell me stories, and then I was one of the pallbearers there, and I think Charlie was an honorary pallbearer for Kelly. So we just got to be really close friends with the people in Wayland over the years from the first book. So, uh, got some time invested in that.
Definitely.
Might add that the local man, Cheryl Williams.
Yes, Cheryl.
From North Harden, that's his, that's a painting of Kelly that Cheryl did, and that's what, that's the book cover.
Yeah, there's a full-page picture of Cheryl's inside pages, inside here of Cheryl.
Presenting it to Kelly.
Presenting it, yeah.
Now, Kelly passed away. When did he?
2019.
2019. So before COVID. And, um, he went in his own terms.
Yes.
He did.
Well, one of the things I was gonna add.
I was gonna say, well, Cheryl Williams is a great historian.
He, he is.
He helped initially with the Hall of Fame, that Basketball Hall of Fame, writing the biographies. Oh, wow, beautiful. I don't know if they can zoom in. I'm gonna hold this over there. Cheryl, of course, was a social studies teacher at North Harden High School. We called him S. Williams. And of course, was a good friend of Ron Bevers. It was a great time going up.
And a great historian.
I've had some people that tell me, when they found out I knew Cheryl, they said, oh, he, I was a student of his, and he's one of the best teachers I ever had.
Best teacher ever, ever. I mean, and he was so generous of his time with me initially working on the Hall of Fame. He and Rick Hubery and, uh, because going into it, you know, I know, I know a lot about basketball, but I, I have learned a lot more since I've been involved. I've got a whole.
Cheryl's also a stand-up comic over at Joel Ray's Prows.
And he plays, he plays in his band. He has a band, too.
Multi-talented, sort of like Charlie here, multi-talented.
I was gonna say, uh, can do a lot of things, master a lot of things, too. Uh, I admire anyone that can produce and publish a book, Gary.
Well, I've been very fortunate. This is my 23rd book.
Do you have a favorite?
Well, uh.
It's like your children.
Well, it is. And I had a book I did on the boys from Corbin, America's Greatest Little Spur Town, which I really enjoyed, the Byrd family and the Seldie family. Uh, the, one of the books that was the most trying for me, it took me two and a half years. Murder on Youngers Creek Road.
Oh, the true story?
True story here of a murder that took place back in 1975.
That's over there near Pearl Hollow.
And it's, the, the book is, the book is still selling very well.
I mean, we know Central Kentucky has got a, a big history when it comes to crime and.
Well, so does Bowling Green.
Yeah, that's true.
Bowling Green, more than, Bowling Green was a little Chicago.
Well, they were kind of connected on that, too, weren't they?
Well, and you also cookbooks, right?
Cookbooks, recipes, places to visit, places to shop. I did 101 Most Places to Shop. I did 101 Most Places to Eat. I've done three editions for that on the cover.
Hey, if you start a new one of that, can I be included?
On the cover of my last eating book, we did it at Rick Hawkins's place.
Oh, great.
Uh, the little Andy Griffin Mayberry thing he's recreated at his place, and we had him on the cover of it with, with one of his cars and stuff. So I've been blessed, you know.
Hey, you started a new one of that, can I be included?
On the cover of my last eating book, we did it at Rick Hawkins's place.
Times have changed, so people don't read books. They tend to download them and, and that type of thing, but I'm, I'm old school. I like to have it in my hand as I'm reading, because I like going back and forth, especially when you have great pictures and, um, so. I'm a, I'm a definitely a book person when it comes to that and YouTube, Charlie. So to invite everybody in again, let us know when it's gonna be held.
October 28th, which is a Tuesday.
Do they need to go online?
Have to have reservations. Must have reservations. It's $35 to the public, and that's all day, all afternoon. And I have a shrimp, shrimp boil, and just come and have fun all afternoon. Meet and greet, take photographs. There'll be, uh, the legends will be doing some interviews and stuff. It's just gonna be a fun afternoon. Just be a fun afternoon, and we got plenty of parking, so.
With, with the people that's gonna be there, do you look forward to seeing somebody you haven't seen in a long time?
Well, I, I.
So many have passed. That's true, too.
Most of these people you haven't seen in quite a while. So it's some you don't see every day.
It's just gonna be a fun afternoon.
And some, some you've only read about.
That's true, definitely.
So that's what's, what's great.
You know, the last big event we had, actually, Gary, was in Wayland when Kelly had been sick, he came home, and we had a big luncheon up there for him, and how many people were up there for that luncheon that day?
Probably close to 100.
100 people, yeah. They were legends.
That museum is done right.
People flew in, people flew in. I mean, we were in vans, and it was just unbelievable how many people came from out of town, across the state of Kentucky. I lived in Bowling Green at the time, but just moved back here to E-Town in last year. But in Bowling Green at the time, there was probably 20 or 25 people.
Well, you mentioned some names, Darrell Carrier and Corky. I'm just curious, because they both have tales that they're the best.
It's Kelly did, too.
Yes.
They, they were all proud of their shot.
Yes, yes. I remember, well, and you, you mentioned Clem Haskins being there. Of course, Clem, you'll see him at a lot of Taylor County Fifth Region games and things, and so I tried to catch up with him and his lovely wife.
It's a bit.
Just beautiful.
It's Kelly did, too.
And, and again, it's just, it's because basketball is so special. I mean, it's white, it's white.
The thing is, legends never. The thing is, legends never die.
I had a front row seat for thirteen years. I did the color on Western's basketball games with Wes Strider.
Yeah.
Wes did the play-by-play. I did the color for thirteen years. So, we traveled with the team and went through the coaches and went through Clem and Murray Arnold and of course, John Oldham. Jim Richards.
Legends never die.
I had a front row seat. I'm hoping Jim Richards can be at your event.
Hope so too. Been to quite a few of them.
I've heard of quite a few stories about how Coach Diddle was and wasn't. And how he'd recruit and, and things such as that. Clem's got a fun story about how they recruited him.
Oh, that, yeah.
With, um, and I'm trying to think, the player from Owensboro.
Hope so too.
Um, I've heard of quite a few stories about how.
Wayne Chapman, yeah.
They were best buddies. That's Rex's dad, of course, you know, and things. They had some funny stories there too.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Coach Diddle liked to recruit some of the players. He'd use pretty girls.
Yes.
To recruit them.
Hard to believe.
Curly, Curly Selby had told me that that's how he was recruiting them.
That's his dad, of course. Or the idea he'd bring the others in, you know, that, those other players, you know. I think back to the whole, the fabulous team he put together with him.
Hard to believe.
Wayne Chapman told me that that's, he had some players and they were all kinda from Kentucky within a close proximity.
And then everybody just traveled with them so well and, and it was great. It had to be a great time to live during that time too. So, I wanna thank you both for carrying the history on, educating me. Because in the many years I've been doing the High School Basketball Hall of Fame, I'll go to all kinds of references to get information. Um, sometimes I, I don't know those tall stories. It was great.
Well, it's kinda funny, the older you get, the taller they get.
So, I go in being, leave everything they say. And, um, and, and it's, it's been a, it's been a wonderful ride. So, I thank you all for doing that.
Well, thank you.
Everybody, where can they get your books?
Well, they're gonna be able to get them down at Thurman's Landing at the event on the twenty-eighth. It's gonna be available at Barnes and Noble. Uh, it's gonna, some of them are gonna be available at the History Museum here. And it's gonna be around and.
It's been a wonderful ride. So, I thank you all.
And I'll have them and a lot of people want them signed and stuff. And I live here now, so I'm easy to get a hold of.
Right. That is awesome. Well, uh, this is a great opportunity to learn more about the state. If you haven't heard of King Kelly Coleman, you definitely need to take a look at Gary's books. It's just amazing. And Charlie always throws a great party.
A lot of people want them signed.
So, you need to come to Sonora. And for those of you that don't know, you know, that's only about thirteen, fourteen miles from Elizabeth Town. I say that we're probably gonna be becoming Bowling Green North and Louisville South, with what's going on in Glendale and such. So, we gotta keep our identity going as high school towns. Sonora and Upton and Glendale, they all had great high school basketball teams at that time too.
They certainly do.
So, come on out and support a great cause and have some fun and delicious food when you're there. What's going on in Glendale.
Thank you, Gina.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Okay. I'm gonna head down that way that day. I can't stay all day, but I'm gonna come down.
Well, and we'll visit some more, but.
So, come on out and support a great cause.
One of the things I was gonna say also, he's added, I think, what, ten chapters about, Gary?
Yeah, I, I can't even remember.
A whole new set of pictures.
Oh, pictures.
A picture.
There's the full-blown picture of it right there. That's what he painted right there that he's presenting. And here's Kelly signing them.
Oh, wow. He was so, I, I didn't get to meet him until the night of the whole thing. Cause you know, he couldn't come up, um, before then. And so, I got to.
You remember those blue eyes, don't you?